Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the city 2015 land use plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pay your bills. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome. The first thing I'd like to do is to go through the consent agenda and at the end of that we will be asking anyone in the audience if they would like to move an item to the regular agenda. First is the approval of March 4, 2009 meetings of the regular Planning Commission meeting. Number two is Platts. Number three is 2009-03-01 as a rezone from the RC Recreation Conservation District to the Harmattan Park Planned Development District that allowed uses at, for allowed uses at the southwest corner of East 41st Street and South Dakota Highway 11. Number four is 2009-03-08, a rezone from the C4 Planned Commercial District to the C2 General Commercial District for allowed uses at 1400 North Cliff Avenue. Number five, 2009-03-11, a rezone from the AGA, excuse me, the AG Agricultural District to the C4 Planned Commercial District for allowed uses at southeast corner of 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Number six is 2009-03-19, a rezone from the C4 Planned Commercial District to the I1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses at 4501 West 61st Street North. Number seven is 2009-03-05, a major amendment to Subarea B of the Valhalla Planned Development District to add a church as a permitted use at 4601 through 4605 South Tech Link Circle. Number eight, 2009-02-20, a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at 1401 South Minnesota Avenue. Number nine, 2009-03-03, a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow additional spaces for a used car lot at 121 North Marion Road. Number 10, 2009-03-12, conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Number 11, 2009-03-04, final development plan in Subarea W of the Platinum Valley III Planned Development District to construct fourplexes at 3401, 3405, 3501, and 3503 West 93rd Street. Are there any objections from the audience to any item listed on the consent agenda? Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any item listed on the consent agenda?
My name's Carol Bowden and I live at 3439 South Harmony Drive. And we don't think it's right that they want to sell alcohol at the Ball Diamonds.
Okay ma'am.
Item number three.
Item number three, okay. We will move that to the regular agenda. Why don't we finish with this and then we'll have you come up, okay? Okay. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission to any item listed on the consent Okay. If they're being done, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with item number three being moved to, off of the consent to the regular? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda along with the, to move item number three. Okay. Second? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda and to move number three to the regular agenda. Is there a motion to approve then the regular agenda with number three?
I'll move for approval of the regular agenda with item three being the first item to consent.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We forgot to vote on the first, on the consent agenda. The motion has been made and seconded. Now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll move to the other. Sorry about that.
I move that we approve the regular agenda with the addition of item number three from the consent agenda being the first item.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the regular agenda has been approved and we have added number three to that agenda. And with that, we will start with number three.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. My name is David Loveland and I will be representing staff on this and later items. The petition before you is a rezone from the RC Recreation Conservation District to the Harmattan Park Planned Development District for allowed uses at the southwest corner of East 41st Street and South Dakota Highway 11. You may be familiar with this park site. It is a home to a regional softball complex, softball and baseball complex that the Parks and Rec Department has been developing over the last several years. What we're, what the application is for, excuse me, this evening, is the applicant is Don Kearney with, who's the Director of the City Parks and Recreation Department. What we're, what we're considering here is a request to modify the zoning to a Planned Development District and break it into two subareas which you can see on your screens, Subarea A and Subarea B. The underlying zoning district will still be the RC Recreation Conservation District which will, which will control setbacks and signage and those types of items. The difference is that in Subarea A, we are considering the, to add on sale alcohol in association with Parks and Recreation, recreation, adult leagues, tournaments, and special The park site itself is about 129 acres and with the transition of adult tournament and adult league play to include the Harmattan Park site, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting to allow malt beverage sales. The RC District does not allow for this, for this use and so as a result, we are requesting to create the Harmattan Park Planned Development District. Subarea A is the easternmost portion of the park itself bound by the park access road on the west and south and South Dakota Highway 11 to the east. The sale of alcohol will not occur in Subarea B which is, which is adjacent to the residential properties. The closest residential property to Subarea A is approximately 780 feet to the west. With this consideration, because the subject application provides for separation between the on sale alcohol and residential uses, we are recommending approval of the rezoning with regulations as attached to your staff report. That concludes staff report. We have received calls, obviously, and so I think there are people here who would like to speak on this item.
Okay, any questions of Dave? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience wishing to address this?
Okay. I just don't feel it's right to have the alcohol there because it's right on the bike path where families are riding and we're, are we teaching our kids that it's all right to drink because there's young kids from the American Legion team that play over there? And is that teaching them that it's all right for them to drink too? And then I don't think Lemmy had any intentions of alcohol being sold on his park when he gave that land to him.
Any questions? Thank you. The petitioner, is the petitioner here?
Don Kearney of Parks and Recreation is just available for questions if there are any other commission. Unless you'd like more information or background information.
Madam Chair, Don. What normally happens in other parks around the city of Sioux Falls, because I'm under the impression that this is not uncommon and that the Park District does have a process to either give people a one-day permit or a license or whatever it is, and then how does the Park District monitor the events when they are, are being held?
Yeah, a little background on our city, city policies with regard to alcohol. All the parks in our park system do allow alcohol to be consumed in the parks unless otherwise specifically restricted by city ordinance. There are a handful of those parks that are restricted by city ordinance. Harmattan Park is not one of those. Then we also have another method of being able to have a special one-day permit which oftentimes are for special events that occur in our parks where applicants and nonprofits can approach the city council and request a special one-day permit to be able to serve and sell alcohol.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Don, what is the, what are the mechanics then of how this would work as relates to tournaments and who actually sells the alcohol and how does that go?
We have a vendor both at Sherman Park and now at Harmattan Park with the advent of the new complex opening up this spring that would sell the alcohol. They would be responsible for its sale through our concession areas that we have at, at the Harmattan Complex as well as the Sherman Complex. And by way of background as well is that we're moving the entire men's slow pitch program out into Harmattan Park and the reason why it was built is because we've had a backlog of a number of teams that were requesting to participate. And so I think the last time I checked, we had 100, we had 132 teams and we've been capped historically at 100 because we just don't have enough fields to play on. And so another thing I might share as well is that, you know, Sherman Park has been there for a long time. We played softball there for a long time and have, have had a similar alcohol sales in Sherman Park and historically we've not had a problem with it. And so we certainly don't expect to have any problems with it out at, out at Harmattan.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Don, was there anything when the land was deeded to the city in terms of a covenant or an expressed statement from the donor about youth only or alcohol not being on that premise? Is there anything related to the deed?
No, none that I'm aware of and in actually pulling some of the articles back from 1998 when the land was originally donated, it was identified that this would be used as an adult softball complex and so, you know, obviously that's been the plan all along.
Okay, thank you.
Don, is this an accurate rendition of the number of, of fields? There'll be eight? And this will be primarily for slow pitch?
That's correct.
Sherman will still be fast pitch?
It's fast pitch and slow pitch. We're, we're moving some teams around because of the capacity that we now will be able to have at Sherman and so some teams that maybe were playing at Kenny Anderson Park will now move to Sherman Park. And so the different leagues, we met with all of them to identify who's best to go to which, which particular complex now, but it does free up some space at some of the other complexes.
So there's seven baseball fields there.
That's correct.
Is that for teenager baseball, high school?
Actually, USF plays there, all the way down to 13 years of age that play at, at Harmattan. So Legion plays there, the high school program plays there, and then obviously USF plays on that championship field.
Was the intent from day one to have on sale alcohol here?
Yeah, you know, we basically planned to run the same program that we run at Sherman Park for the last several decades.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions of Don? Okay. All for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the rezone on item three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we'll move to number 12 on the regular agenda.
Good evening again. Before you on item number 12 is a one-year review of a conditional use permit that was approved by this body on May, on April 2 of 2008. In your staff report is a, is the original staff report from a year ago and which highlights what was discussed at that time. The applicant that we're considering for the review tonight is Saul Orosco with a company by the name of Billers, Don Saul. And as you know, in your history, this, the applicant who obtained the conditional use permit a year ago never actually opened his restaurant. This conditional, this conditional use permit in fact is scheduled to expire on Friday, April 3. The reason that this is before you is because during the consideration of the conditional use permit a year ago, the Planning Commission added a stipulation that called for a one-year review and so I wanted to bring that to you, we wanted to bring that to you and let you know what has occurred with this, with this location. So because the applicant never opened a restaurant based upon this conditional use approval, we are recommending that this report be accepted. That concludes staff report.
Any questions? Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner here? Okay, call for action?
I'll make a motion to approve the report submitted.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the report as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13, a rezone from the River Oaks Planned Development District to the C4 Planned Commercial District for allowed uses at 1224 East 57th Street.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing staff on this item and other items this evening. The applicant for Olson Oil Company is Todd Olson and the purpose of this rezoning is to reflect the existing uses of a Planned Development District that has completed construction. It has been the policy in the past for the Planning Department to go into these Planned Development Districts once they're completed and to rezone those for, to reflect the existing uses. It does conform with the comp plan. Subject property was zoned for development in 1982 with a major amendment to allow development for a dance studio on the western portion of the property. Construction of allowed uses, as I mentioned, has been completed through the final development plan process which included signage and landscaping and setbacks. Existing and proposed commercial uses appear to be compatible with the adjacent zoning and setback and landscaping buffers in place and the subject application is complete for your consideration. The applicant has also proposed a freestanding sign to be increased in size once the zoning is complete. The increase in size would be in conformance with the C4 Planned Commercial zoning regulations. Because the application is for existing and future uses that are compatible with adjacent zoning and all development is in place and construction has been completed, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, we've had no calls on this application. That concludes staff report.
Any questions of Steve?
Madam Chair. Steve, what if any differences exist between the subarea regulations in place or referred to as a part of the Plan Development for this subarea, this piece, and the C4 zoning that they're seeking?
The subarea regulations under which the project was constructed called for certain setbacks for the parking, landscaping requirements that were in addition to what would have been required under conventional zoning, as well as landscaping buffers and screening from this project to residential development to the north. All of those were approved in the final development plan process and were constructed as approved. The existing zoning regulations, if the rezoning is granted this evening, would allow construction to a lesser setback. The landscaping requirements would not be as stringent and increased signage would be allowed. The uses would be pretty much the same. The uses would be as allowed previously in the subarea regulations for commercial at this location. We, it's our understanding the applicant has no plans to change the construction as it is now and we trust that it will continue as it is now constructed.
Steve, why would staff recommend approval of this change if it would give this owner or a future owner the right to change the rules that we originally allowed that to be placed in there under? Would that be fair to the surrounding neighborhood?
It can be. Under the rules of the Plan Development District, zoning district as it is now, it is easier for the applicant to come forward with minor amendments, revisions to any, a final development plan that's been constructed and make changes in that manner and continue to do so.
Under the existing.
Under the existing Plan Development zoning. Under conventional zoning, it's a bit more difficult. Instead of coming to you as Planning Commissioners to get change in signage allowance, they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment, which I believe is, has criteria that typically have been a little more difficult to get by for making changes in a conventional zoning district. As well as the uses, if, if they were to propose uses that were not allowed under either zoning district, they would have to go through a rezoning process. In the Plan Development District, all they'd have to do is do a major amendment to allow those uses that weren't previously allowed. So it's actually, I think, to the neighborhood's benefit to get it into a conventional zoning district where it's more difficult to make a change.
Any additional questions of Steve? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Todd Olson. My address is 951 South Marion Road. I guess I'm here to answer any questions. Just a little bit of information for you. I did conduct a neighborhood meeting last Wednesday night. I went around and invited the neighborhood surrounding this location around the Plum Creek perimeter road and visited with neighbors, invited them to a neighborhood meeting and that went fairly well. We didn't have any opposition or concerns. We answered questions and told them basically what we were doing and why we want to do it, so.
Why do you want to do it, Todd?
My primary reason for, for doing this for the C store is I am putting in a Taco John's restaurant and I do, under the current zoning, I cannot provide those folks a sign and I would like to increase my square footage. And the only way to do this, from my understanding, Steve, is to rezone it to the conventional
Have you been to, Steve, what's the Board, Board of Adjustments? Have you tried that? Todd, have you?
He would not go to the Board of Adjustment if, in order to get increased signage under the current zoning, he would have to come to you for that. If he is rezoned, he doesn't have to go to anybody. He can just meet the requirements of the new zoning district.
Steve, what kind of sign are we talking about here?
We have, I thought we had a picture. Was there a picture in there? It's their existing sign, only taller. It's a monument style with brick on the face and a flat signage. About four foot taller, was it?
I believe we're adding 42 square feet to the sign.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Todd or Steve, maybe it's Steve's question, under the present zoning, this is a minor amendment, correct?
That's correct.
And was there a sign plan for this PD?
Yes, and they did conform to the signage plan for the PD.
For the original sign?
For the original sign.
So really this is just an issue of coming back with a minor amendment to increase the size of the sign?
Technically, if, if, for the sign, that's correct. But again, as I say, it's suspend the city's policy whenever possible to zone completed Planned Development Districts into conventional zoning so that the restrictions would be actually tighter. He could come back under a Planned Development District minor amendment and triple the size of his sign, but in the conventional zoning district, he could not. He could only increase it by a certain amount of percentage and that's the maximum he would be allowed.
If we'd approve it?
If you approve the rezoning.
I know that we have, and I'm trying, and I'm sure there are some, I can't think of a C4 piece that we went back and I'm sure we probably have. I know we've done it on multifamily. I know we've done it on office. And we have done it on C4, taken it out of the PD after it's completed and put conventional zoning on it. And it's usually a staff type of deal usually promotes that.
Yeah, it's usually staff initiated, but in this case, we weren't ready to initiate it, Todd was.
The only thing I've struggled with is when we lead a neighborhood, everybody to believe, hey, things are being done under a PD. We've all got some hearsay and it ends up being a certain way. We come back in after the fact, change it to where maybe the setbacks do change, the landscaping does change. And I struggle with that just a little bit personally.
If I can respond?
Absolutely.
On the setbacks, I don't think it'd be much of a problem because there's quite a bit, bit of investment in, capital investment in the improvements that were made at the, at the setbacks at the time. So I don't see them moving the building closer to the street. And usually the difference in setback would not be enough to warrant a building expansion or addition of some kind in that direction, so I'm not too worried about the setbacks. The landscaping, though, you are right on that point. If the landscaping If the landscaping dies out, there's nothing that requires him to put it back the way it was approved in the first place.
But once it's out of a PD and straight C4, don't we pretty much lose control of what happens to that particular site?
No, there are still requirements that if the site is greater than an acre, it would come to you as a conditional use for any major change.
Steve, is there, is there the ability to put stipulations on this, on a rezon?
No, not on the rezoning. You would have to wait until another change that kicked it into the conditional use requirement in order to make any changes.
Todd, I trade at your station there.
Appreciate that.
And I know there's a lot of remodeling going on there. I, I've seen the sign, and I'm sure we'll have a debate. We wrestle with signs, quite frankly. At least I do. And I know that's become a busy corner. But there's a fair amount of residential right to the west and right to the north of you there that.
Right.
I think helped get you approved because you were a PD. And I, and I struggle with taking that away now.
Yeah, you know, we, we were first when, when we developed out there, and, and a lot has changed, and you're, I know you're fully aware that every corner is, except for the Burger King lot on, on, across the street, is developed. And every sign except for ours, and possibly one other, is freestanding signs. So we have, I think, one of two monument signs in the area. The Walgreens sign is freestanding, the Sunshine sign is freestanding, the sign directly to the south for the New Dakota Bank is freestanding. So it's not outside the norm to have a freestanding sign. And I'm not asking to do a high-rise 23-foot sign. I'm asking to add 42 square feet. I'm allowed, right now, I'm at 98 square feet, and I think I'm allowed to go to 144.
Is the sign on Cliff or is it on 57th?
It's actually on, it's hard to tell. It's, it's actually on 57th. It's, it's on the corner. So unless you string a line, you wouldn't really know which corner it's on, but permitted under 57th Street.
Maybe I've, and maybe I'm getting confused, which is easy, but under a minor amendment, I think I heard you could come back under your present zoning and ask for an increase in signage?
I wasn't aware I could, could do that, if that is possible.
Madam Chair. Todd, I'm wondering if you could tell us a little, I, I am your neighbor to live around the corner, frequent your store a lot. I'm interested in what the neighborhood had to say when you presented this to them.
You know, you know what? I personally delivered all the invitations, and I didn't realize it was going to take me two hours to develop, deliver 18 invitations, but you know what? The neighbors, most of them are home, so, and, and they were, they were ready to talk, and I told them who I was and what I was doing, and invited them to the meeting, and we pretty much covered my whole agenda at the doorstep, and, and then some. But.
I'm sure you got a little bit about pulling the TCBY yogurt out of there, for sure.
Yeah.
So it was positive?
Yeah, and, and back when we did this, we had, we had to plant a staggered row of pine trees in the back and a zigzag fence between every pine tree. It's, it's the most elaborate landscape buffer that I've, I've been through, but those, those trees are really nice now. I don't know if they're 16 feet tall or 18, but they're, they're up there, and they're also on a berm.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's really protected. And I talked to the, to the, the neighbors directly behind, they're part of a townhome, kind of a development area, and the, the association president was at my meeting. And he kind of represented the voices of those, I think there's probably eight, eight units back there. And he was, he was fine with it.
You specifically talked about the increase?
Yes, and I, I brought him a picture of, of what we have now and what we want to do.
Do you have a picture you could show us?
No, I, I really, I, I guess I turned one in with my application, and I assumed that it would be on a, available, but.
So Todd, the only change you look at making is to the signage. The other, I mean, you'll have the Taco John's in there, but physically, the landscaping will stay the same.
Yes, yes, we're, we're there for the long haul. We have a, you know, a long-term lease with Taco John's coming up. We're about two-thirds of the way through a $600,000 interior remodel job, so we're not going to move that building anywhere. So.
Okay, any other questions of Todd?
Todd, if we didn't increase the sign, where are they going to put their sign? Would they just make your sign smaller?
I'm, I'm just going taller. I'm going three feet taller.
And let's say it didn't pass tonight.
You know, I'd be frustrated, and my tenant would be frustrated.
Would that just take the existing sign and divide it in half?
No, I couldn't, I couldn't provide them any signage. I'm, I've got a lease with Core Trust. They're on my monument sign. I've got my petroleum signage. I'm already down to the limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Anyone from the audience wishing to address this item? If not, call for action? Call for a motion?
For the purposes of discussion, I'll move to approve item 13 and the rezon.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, like Kenny, nervous about changing or coming out of a PD to conventional zoning, but when Steve mentioned that anything over an acre would still have to come back if there were changes to the building or to the site plan, so I'm comfortable with that part of it. I, I would give Todd some credit for already having a monument sign instead of a pylon sign. For that reason, extending it for the additional signage, I guess in this case I could support.
I think we could accomplish the same thing on a minor amendment. And, and I think Todd runs a good operation there. I am concerned about changing things from a PD back to a C4. I'd love, I wish we were looking at this as a minor amendment. We, we could have an idea what the sign was going to look like. I don't know what his timeframe is. I'd love to see him come back in 30 days and approach this, leave him the PD in place, do a minor amendment. We could debate allowing a larger sign there. I think it'd be that simple.
I hear what you're saying, Kenny. I mean, I, I think the thing that I struggle with, with dealing with it in that process is that, how many requests for minor amendments and arguments that we'll hear for, you know, changing those signage ordinances in other areas?
I think what we're talking about is any commercial now on a PD, we'll look at the same thing. Hey, take me out of the PD, let's make it conventional so I can do some more signage. I think it's kind of a two-way sword. I think through minor amendment or, yeah, minor amendment, I think we don't lose control of the PD regulations that are in place.
And hopefully, the neighborhoods will help us understand their comfort level with what's, with what's happening.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Number 14, a rezon from the River Oaks Plan Development District to the O General Office District for Allowed Uses at 1200 East 57th Street.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. Staff will take those under consideration.
You have one more to go, Todd.
We're not done with Todd yet.
Again, thank you for your comments. Staff will take those into consideration for future applications of this type. That's, was good discussion. The second part of this application from Mr. Olson has to do with the remaining half of the, of this property and the planned development. Actually, you notice on the graphic to the north that residential development is also in the planned development district, and in the future, staff will probably initiate a rezoning to take those residential units and zone those to conventional for their portion of the PD. But in the second half now, Mr. Olson is requesting a rezoning to O Office to reflect existing uses as they're currently developed. Be the same zoning purpose and history. It was all developed as a single complex, but the subarea regulations allowed commercial only on the corner. The rest of it was to be office. Over a period of time, there were a couple amendments made to allow a pet grooming center and a dance studio in that office building, which I believe are still there. Okay. And so this rezoning will allow them to continue as, under the conventional zoning district regulations. However, in the future, if there's any use that would want to go in there that does not qualify for the O Office District, uses as permissive, permitted, or conditional use, they would have to go to a rezoning in order to get it in there. It would be a lot more difficult. Under the PD, they could come back to you to request permission to do that, and the applicant is aware of that. So we've had no calls on this, I'm sorry, we did have one call from a neighbor to the west who lives on that street. His concern was that, he thought that the development would go in there and not have access from that street to the west, and I assured him that there were no proposed changes by the applicant for that purpose, and then he was satisfied. And that, staff is recommending approval because the uses are compatible and have been acceptable in the neighborhood in the past, and that, that concludes staff report.
Anyone for questions of Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner present? I guess that's kind of a redundant question.
I apologize for that. I was thinking we were doing, doing them together. Again, my name's Todd Olson, representing this, these two strip malls.
And your address, Todd?
951 South Marion Road.
Thank you. Any questions of Todd?
Oh, boy.
Kenny, do you go to the dog place, too?
We wanted to, since, since we own both properties, we wanted to just get this cleaned up, so I'm going to put that to bed.
Any questions? Thank you, Todd. If not, call for a motion?
I move for approval.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Oh, I'd like to add a little bit for, for Kenny's benefit, I think. You know, I, I really do appreciate all the conversations that we've had about this, and just sitting here thinking about it, you know, the, it would probably be good to have staff involved at some level if we're going from planned districts to conventional zoning, involved with the neighborhood so that they are incredibly comfortable that it's been explained to them in their entirety and all of the things that go along with it. So maybe we can add that for future thought, but.
Thank you, Nina.
I feel the same way. You're welcome, Kenny.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thanks, Todd. Number 15, major amendment to SubArea A of the Hazeltine Plan Development District to include C4 Planned Commercial District for Allowed Uses at West Benson Road and North Marion Road.
This project as a major amendment is to an existing planned development zoning district, which allows for C4 Planned Commercial as well as office and multifamily. The reason for the major amendment is to try to clarify in the subarea regulations the uses allowed and under what conditions. It also clarifies, or actually expands, the option, optional uses that would be allowed in the district, and is more definite in terms of where certain uses would not be allowed. We've included in your packets of information the revised subarea regulations that outline the, the expanded uses permitted, and also under other regulations where certain uses would not be allowed. Because the zoning amendment is proposed to allow a greater range of allowed commercial uses in the PD, we have a concept that would be required for providing transitional land use or methods of buffering around proposed commercial uses, and those would be proposed in future amendments or final development plans by the applicant. We do not have a concept to present to you on that this evening. The applicant may wish to possibly describe some of those uses that they're thinking about. Otherwise, we have the verbiage in there that a maximum of 50% of individual building volume within SubArea A may be occupied by commercial and accessory uses, and the land area set aside for commercial accessory uses, including parking, loading spaces, and so on. Incidental to the commercial use shall be allowed a maximum of 50% of the land area set aside for building development. This is a concept for mixed-use development. It allows mixed use to occupy a building volume or, and/or land area, and still meet the requirements of the planned development zoning district that we've asked for. We feel that that gives the applicant more flexibility in marketing of the project, the clarification that all permitted special uses within the C4 Planned Development District except, as noted, under other regulations. And then we also add all permissive, permitted, special, and conditional uses within the O, within the O General Office and the RA1 District, again, except as noted under other regulations. The other regulations, item number G, car washes, car dispensing stations, parking ramps, funeral establishments, and crematories are not allowed abutting a single-family land use or parcels zoned as RS1 or RS2. So in effect, it is providing additional transition from the PD into the conventional zoning district, as shown on his subdivision plan. But again, he's going to have to come forward with final development plans or amendments that show you a transition of uses on-site to those conventional zoning areas in the future. The applicant has agreed to those conditions, and we've had no calls from adjacent property owners, so that concludes staff report.
Any questions of Steve?
Steve, this was an item that was on last month's agenda.
It was. It was on as a rezoning to a straight C4 conventional.
From the PD.
From the PD.
This is not their request.
No, it's not.
This is believing in a PD.
It's a major amendment to revise the subarea regulations to provide clarification of expanded uses allowed, and also provide for some, a greater definition of how those uses would be provided.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please?
Steve Van Busker, 5800 South Remington Place, Sioux Falls. I'm here on behalf of the Hazleton Partners tonight. Got it. Can show you a couple of things here. This is just a marketing brochure. As far as concepts of what we're trying to do out there, that's just kind of the, that's the marketing brochure of what we've been trying to market out there, but that, the site plan's probably the most curious thing, I guess. You know, some of the things that we're looking at doing, things that we want to do with the site, you'll notice, you know, the blue over there to the left is, well, to my left, I'm not sure how you guys are looking at it, but the, the blue is, that's zoned RD. This is actually one of four concepts that we had Spencer Ruff do for us, so we just kind of picked this as a representative one, so they're all kind of variations on, on the same sort of theme. But the blue is the RS, RD zoning, excuse me, that's straight conventional zoning. Up at the top, you'll see where it says Hazleton, you've got the nest and the eggs. That's, that's straight RA1 zoning up there. When we get down into the darker green, where you see the building concepts laid out, When we get down into the darker green where you see the building concepts laid out, kind of the things we've contemplated with this planned development is doing a streetscape there with, you know, like, front porches. Those are townhouses along the twin homes, facing the twin homes, so there's no garages, and we'd face the garage into the larger parking lot that you see inside of the, you know, inside the PD. So that's, you know, those narrow ones are townhouses, basically, those narrow footprints. And then as coming into it, you know, those buildings, I know Spencer contemplated, you know, going down to the square, which would be like a community park area. He had, you know, the L-shaped buildings down there, like a retail office with stacked mixed use above, and then, you know, the same thing with those other buildings going off to the northwest there. And then you see up towards Marion Road is the north-south road there, and Hazleton Trail is where the roundabout's at, but you'll see there on the corner of Marion and Hazleton Trail coming to that roundabout is that's where we had put together a gas station concept. You can kind of notice, you know, the smaller dots, those would be the, I presume, the pumps. And a restaurant, a strip mall kind of across the street to the west more, and then, you know, the restaurant more where the right-in, right-out is down at Marion Road. So, and then going further south down into the corner, I guess, you know, the things that we've been talking to people about is, you know, down at Marion and Benson Road, you know, intersection, you know, we just left it as a light-green box, I guess, representing, you know, office, you know, it says office commercial there, but that's more office in our minds because as you go down Benson Road, you have that straight conventional office zoning going down Benson Road to the, yeah, half-mile line. So that's kind of, you know, some of the concepts that we've been working on out there, and that's what we're trying to market, and I think the changes tonight will help bring some of those things forward, you know, with those uses. You know, I think one thing, we'll have to come back for conditional uses. We realize that in the PD process and present plans, you know, this is all, like I say, one of four versions. Nothing's built, nothing's graded. So we got a long ways to go from here, but it's a place to start, and I think with the flexibility and the PD changes, it'll help us present this project to people a little better. So with that, I'll take questions.
Do you find this easy to do, doing it as a PD or straight conventional zoning?
Well, straight conventional zoning, I think, is easier. You know, I think you don't, you've got more flexibility there. I mean, just listening to your conversation just a moment ago, I mean, same thought process. You know, you can move a little faster, you know, people, you know, people tend to not look as far ahead in the future getting these things done, and when they're ready to go, they're ready to go, and, you know, the faster we can turn projects around, you know, the quicker we can respond to the need. So, you know, C4 is definitely preferable in my eyes as a developer, trying to bring a product to market, you know, so it helps.
I think you'd have had a hard time getting a 40 acres zone the way you're getting it going on straight, so I would think that'd be an advantage to PD. When you say RD in the blue, we're talking single-family there, aren't we?
Yeah, that's, you know, well, actually, what that block is set up for, there's actually RD where the street.
Oh, I see where you're looking.
Yeah, there's RD across from the street. Well, let's see, you had it on that.
On RD here, it's just hard to tell the different shades of the blue.
Yeah, we've got this drawn here. Steve there, the snake in the middle, that's all RD. So, I mean, so, but the pretty picture, you know, is a little harder to tell, but yeah, that's all RD. Actually, we had, right where Steve was just drawing that line there, that block actually was set up, you know, the possibility of, like, back alleys. You know, I don't know if that's real realistic in this northern market or not, but, you know, that was a possibility, you know, kind of the original idea going from that roundabout, have the, you know, the front porch neighborhood, you know, rather than the garage, the garage front neighborhood. If we can pull that off, I don't know. We don't, we're not tying ourselves to that, but we've talked to different guys about that, but that, a lot of that stuff that you see out there that's shown as RD, I can easily see that just being single-family with the RD uses or the multifamily uses across on their side of the road, so.
You're doing the whole development as a PD?
No, the PD is tract one, I think, down there in the corner. The rest of it's conventional zoning.
Thank you. Any other questions of Steve? Thank you. Anyone from the audience wishing to address this item? If not, call for a motion.
I'll move for approval of item 15.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Before we're done here, I'm gonna have staff come up and just explain the advantages for developers for doing a PD versus conventional, if they'd be good enough to do that. And it is a mystery sometimes. It took me a long time before I got to understand it.
Why don't we go ahead and finish this motion, and then, if they'd like to do that. All in favor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'd appreciate the opportunity to speak to this esteemed body. Jeffrey Schmidt, City Planning Office.
Could you show a little more enthusiasm, please?
Planned Development District is just that, and that's why we look at it from that standpoint. And I think all of these items tonight, you've continued to address the issues, and if you kind of reflect back on it, you'll understand that. You look at this land development, you talked about the one down 57th Cliff. We look at it from a planning standpoint as it was a planned development. Did they have a plan when they put it together that this piece is working with this piece in harmony with this one, and then if you bought into that, you understood that this was how it was going to be developed? You also understood and heard tonight that, yeah, but if we do it conventional, we can not have to do it that way, and we can do this, and then come and do that, and then come and do this, and if you're one of those other people that buys in, you don't know what the plan is. You can be shown a drawing and say, this is how we're gonna do it, but there's no guarantee that that's how it's going to be done. The planned development is set. It shows it right there, and that's why when we look at it, just like on this one, we're going, we have the comfort level that you're gonna have to follow through on this, and we get to bring it back to planning commission. And on Todd Olson's down at 57th Cliff, you guys kept saying, yeah, but these neighbors bought into this. They understood that, and if there was not that guarantee, if you lose that, that's where you kept coming, the same thing on these flat pieces of ground. Well, what about the neighbors that are buying into this ground and going, yeah, we saw the pictures, but what happens if it's conventional? Hey, if it's conventional, those pictures were just pictures.
Why would staff not recommend or not allow PD on all development, then?
Recommend? We recommend, we recommend all the time to developers to do planned developments, but they have a right to do it conventionally. And then they say, yeah, but we don't want to do a planned development, and we go, that's.
So Jeff, you must have a trigger point where you're saying, we need you to do this as planned development. It's driven by either size, location, adjacency to neighbors. There's something that is a tipping point.
A lot of it's size. It has to be a give-take. Look, if you're gonna do this whole thing and you want, what do we get in return? We have to have a plan. Well, because they have, you know, and the developers do, they have a plan for it. Look, this is how it's gonna work. Well, what do we get in return? We need to see that comfort level, too. Show us your plan, and we need it in concrete. We need to see that so that we can stand up here and talk to this planning commission as well as the next developer that comes in goes, why did you allow, well, there's a plan. This is all gonna fit together, so.
So Jeff, you're saying that, or I guess I'm asking if you're saying, once a PD's fully built out, you have no problem going back to conventional zoning?
Because it's done. It's built out. I mean, the chances, and it does happen, but the chances of them coming in here and clearing it out then and demolishing it all and starting from scratch is slim.
Sure. But why don't we have some consistency in standards, then, between, for instance, on Todd Olson's, where he had C4 on that corner?
Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't we allow greater signage? I understand signage is an issue, but probably always gonna be an issue, that, you know, to make people come back and come back and come back, I don't see the value in that either.
Sure. Now, I'm getting hesitant in talking about this because we do have some items left on the agenda, and, I mean, this is a really good discussion that we should have and should continue, but we're gonna start getting into what about the landscaping standards and the parking and the lighting, and we could be here a long time talking about specifics.
I'm saying all of those items. Signage, landscaping.
Yep.
I'm hoping there's room for further discussion.
Absolutely.
How to meld all those things better.
And in a PD, and how is the consistency taken into consideration? Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, Jeff, those conversations have, are taking place, and, I mean, you're reviewing a lot of the codes and, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
As well as, we need to have that conversation with this body, too.
Well, and the signage command, the signage group that we had put together and so forth, and so, I mean.
I mean, we're starting to be big kids.
Jeff, thank you for that explanation.
Okay, number 16. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinances of the city for campgrounds and travel trailers.
Good evening. Shawna Goldammer, zoning enforcement manager. Regarding this ordinance amendment and campgrounds within the city of Sioux Falls, I just wanted to kind of update you and let you know that we've been working on it, and we are at the end of my update here. I'm gonna be asking for a deferral, but it was my decision to pull the ordinance from the council agenda and bring it back before you so we could talk about some concerns that were raised both by the planning commission and some of the campground owners here in the city limits. I have met with all the campground owners one-on-one now. The most recent discussion I had was just yesterday. I provided some information to that campground owner, and hopefully he'll have comments for me in the next couple weeks. So what I'm hoping is that I'll have something to present to you in its final form for next month. So you can see that there's no interested parties here tonight because I told them they didn't have to come, and I'm just gonna ask that you defer action on this until next month, and we'll have the final product for you.
Thank you, Shawna. Are there any questions of Shawna?
Item number 17. This is a rezoning request where we're asking to change.
Wait a minute.
Okay. We're on a roll. We're deferring.
Oh, I thought you had more information on number 16.
Is Jeff completely out of line right now?
Okay, I'll make a motion to defer item number 16.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, Madam Chair. Just maybe a quick question for Shawna. Can we receive some information relative to the dialogue with the campground owners?
Sure. Yeah, and they'll be here to discuss, kind of, we're gonna come to a point where we're gonna agree to disagree, and I'm sure they'll bring their concerns forward when we have the discussion.
Sure. It would just be good to kind of understand what the issues were so that we can.
I'd be happy to put that in the staff report.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, I think that the deferral is where we're at, Jeff, and I think everybody's agreed, haven't they?
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It kind of threw me off here. Okay, all in favor for a deferral?
Yes.
Motion pass, or motion is deferred. 16 is deferred. Okay, Jeff.
Item number 17 is a zoning ordinance amendment that staff has brought forward to you. This is to give notification to property owners if they're rezoning their property. We received comments over the last two days from interested citizens. They've asked for a deferral on this item, so we're requesting deferral to work with those property owners or interested parties.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah.
All right.
That was kind of fast and sweet.
Make the motion to defer item 17 to next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, number 17 is deferred. Number 18. Conditional use permit in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to allow a drive-up window at 500 South Cleveland Avenue.
The applicant is representing Booze Boys Discount Wine and Liquor, Robert Wentz, REW Properties LLC. The application's purpose is to provide a drive-up window for existing liquor store. Drive-up windows and allowed use in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and you're looking at the location and whether or not it meets the criteria of the conditional use permit standards. I've indicated those in your application outline in the report. The applicant's site plan is indicating a drive-up window on the north side of the building, and required stacking spaces would be to the south in a driveway next to the building and exiting to East 12th Street on the north side of the building. Majority of the traffic is probably going to enter the site from the south, from Cleveland Avenue, and then turn into the drive-up from the south end of the building and exit on the north side. The plot plan indicates a side yard setback of 16.2 feet and could accommodate a drive-up window projection of two feet and a driveway width of 12, and would leave some additional room for buffering or protecting the adjacent property, which is residential. In that instance, staff is not supportive of any speakerphones or menu boards that would be associated with the window, and we are recommending that a six-foot-high solid wood fence be constructed along the property line to protect the adjacent residential Those are, so our recommendation is for approval with those conditions. We did get a caller who lives in the neighborhood to the north side, towards the back, who currently has a gate in their fence that goes out onto the existing parking lot, and they were concerned would that gate remain so that they could continue to use it with the permission of the subject property. And I talked to the applicant. They are willing to put a new fence in with a gate so that that condition could continue. The neighbor also indicated that the solid wood fence probably would help with containing trash on the site, which they would appreciate, and also screen their property from headlights of cars turning in and out. And we had no other callers, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions of Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner present, please?
Robert Wentz with Rue Properties, 500 South Cleveland, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Have any questions for me?
Say, Robert, how late can a liquor store stay open?
They can stay open till midnight, Monday through Sunday.
And this is a liquor store now?
This is a liquor store. We open at 8:00 in the morning on Monday through Saturday. We close at 11:00 on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and we stay open till midnight on Friday and Saturday, and Sunday is from 11:00 until 5:00.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I thought of asking Jesse that question as to how late.
I could see the wheels turning.
It's a little private.
I just said I had frequented your drive-up at your other location, and it works quite well.
Yep. We don't have a speakerphone. We have just a little doorbell that you ring so people come and answer to you. We don't have any garbies issues over there. We have never had any complaints.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item?
I'm Joyce Nevin of 2806 East Street. I kind of have a horse voice today. My dad's here, and he's got a few pictures, and just wanted to clarify a little bit in terms of the size of that back alley and adjoining residences, and a little concerned about the safety. I understand it's a minimum 12 feet required. My dad took some measurements and with some of the power lines. I think it had about 12 feet, 4 inches, right, Dad? Just if it's safe to be, you know, trafficking through there, and it's not well-lit currently. I mean, there's a couple of lights. One of them's broken out, and I don't know. You know, there is gonna be a fence, I understand, that would probably help, and I'm sure would probably have to have some lighting. There has been some trash from empty, you know, alcohol cans and bottles that gets thrown into the neighbors' yards and that kind of thing, but exactly the location of that window, I guess, I wasn't sure if it would be to the north or to the. or to the, you see the north side, so that would be closer to 12th Street. Okay, so they would just have to drive around the building? I talked to Steve a little. Yeah, I can see where the drive is, but the window would be in the back alley, right? I was kind of wondering if it couldn't be toward the 12th Street, you know, which is commercial instead and I understand there's a few parking places there, but since, I understand the business owns the whole building, couldn't they have adequate parking elsewhere and still put in that drive-up window on the 12th Street side? That would be the north and that'd be possible?
Maybe we can ask the petitioner.
Yeah, we'll have the petitioner come up and answer a few of these questions.
Just a little clarification.
You live in the house right directly to the...
Not directly, there are neighbors and they have children. You know, that would be where I thought that drive-up window was proposed, be right next to their driveway and garage in their house, quite close by there. And I live to the south of there, on Sioux Street.
What was the, what was your address again?
2806 East Sioux Street.
East Sioux Street?
Yes.
Okay.
And I understand there would not be an entrance off of Sioux Street into that back alley. There isn't currently, but...
There is not.
There is no, no, it's curb, so...
Okay, well, possibly the petitioner can answer some of these questions, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam?
Madam? Can I just ask you a couple of quick questions? There currently is not a fence that runs through that alley.
Not a whole fence.
But there's traffic that moves through there occasionally.
Yeah, there's, I think usually, it's just a dumpster area, kind of, but there's a fence on my property, chain link fence, and I do have that gate. There's not a fence where the neighbor had very much anyway, I don't think that the neighbor with his driveway...
So, do you feel like with the fence done correctly that that would actually kind of improve that lot line situation for, for you?
It, it may, you know, I need the fence there too that goes around the property, but the six-foot-high wood fence would help with...
Yeah, I kind of get the sense that we could use this as an opportunity to really improve your, your situation buffer between yourself and that business.
Right.
So I was just interested in how you felt about that specifically.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with that.
Because I think that would help the trash too. I mean, that would, noise, trash, safety, all those kinds of issues. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for her? Okay, could the petitioner come up, please?
On the part, drive up on the north, I wanted it there, but I had to go and get a variance for the parking spots because there is three parking spots on the north. And then with that, I had to do a whole new survey and it just got to be too spendy for me as a small business owner, so I chose to go along in the back alley and, you know, have a six-foot fence. Like I said, that'd probably make everything a lot better anyway.
Are there going to be any additional lights?
There is two lights back there and I didn't know one was out. I had two motion sensor lights put up here just a year ago, so when anybody walks back there, they light up. And whenever I pull up, I know the one by the, the door back there lights up whenever I go in and out at nighttime or during the day, so. And then there is a garage and a fence on the property to 12th Street and there's just an open, I want to say probably about 30 feet, that is somebody's yard back there where he's got a cement pad that he parks the vehicle there once in a while. But everything else is fenced or has a garage where you can't get everything through.
What about trash pickup? Do you, are you out, do you go out there?
We usually send somebody out once a week. I mean, sometimes it's, it's good, it depends on the wind, you know, the wind can blow, I mean, go out to any street corner and you can find any kind of garbage.
Would you be willing to do that a little bit more often?
Yeah, we, we usually go out, we don't, if you come out to front, stop by, I mean, you don't ever see any garbage at the other store. I mean, we like to have clean, clean stores.
Okay.
So you don't see anybody lording around our stores, we, we call the cops, we have very good stores.
Robert, did staff tell you that you had to have those three parking spots to the north?
Yes.
But isn't that where the drive-up?
I could come and ask for a variance.
But aren't they going to be eliminated?
No.
Through cars going around there?
No, no.
Oh, they're going to exit right out onto...
12th Street.
12th Street.
Which there is a driveway right there.
Madam Chair, one more question on the lighting. You said there was two lights now, you're not going to add anymore?
Not at this particular time. I mean, if you, if somebody thinks I need an extra lighting, I mean, it's, it's pretty well lit, you go back there, there are floodlights, there's two of them on each one and they, they shine down very nice.
I would think that the neighbors would prefer to not have more back there.
Yeah, and I put two, two big lights out in front that lights the whole front of the building up because it was kind of dark and they redid 12th Street and Cleveland, the intersection, last year, so we put in new lighting and it's very bright now, wouldn't you say?
I'm more concerned in the alley.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this issue?
Hi, my name is Tim Ibach, I have the house at 20, 2805 East 12th Street. I aim the house, well, if this goes through, I, I'm right next to, I'd be right next, my living room window would probably be 35 feet from a drive, from the drive-up. And nothing against, I like, I mean, nothing against the liquor store, it's, it's a good business. I think though that this is just crossing the line a little bit as far as, I mean, can you imagine living in your house and having a drive-up window 30, 30, 35 feet from my living room window? I never knew anything about this until about 4:30 tonight or I would have, there would have been some more calls on it. So I went out and did some measuring and I'm not quite clear on how, how many feet do you need? What, what was the requirement of as far as space for a car to drive?
Steve, could you answer that question for him, please?
Well, typically you wouldn't need much more than 10 feet, but we figure 12 feet is good enough and then two foot for the projection on the window is 14 and he has 16 feet there, he could still get his fence in.
Okay. I was just, thank you, I was, if he has 16, that would, it would probably surprise me, maybe he does, I mean, it should be measured. Another thing, the drive-up window will increase business, which will bring more cars there, which will, you know, add to more noise at night. I'm just worried about my property going down in value. I guess that's my big concern. Thank you.
Sir, your living room window faces west then?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, I have one face...
You're looking right at the fence?
I have one facing east direction.
Your main window faces north?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Tim, I was under the impression that the, the owner of the liquor store had talked to you and you're saying that that's not true?
I, I haven't, I didn't, excuse me, I didn't know anything about this till 4:30, till about 4:30 this afternoon. I would have been, it would have been nice to have a caller, have a visit.
Okay.
And, and another thing, I, like I said before, I have nothing against the store, it's, he does a good business, but to, to put that drive-up to the north in my eyes would be so much, I, I realize there's probably added cost to it, but boy, there's not much room to the east and there's always kids playing out there and it's, it's a definite safety concern. I feel, you guys, you're the judge of that, but that's my opinion.
Okay, any, any other questions for Tim?
How do you feel about the fence?
Well, as far as the fence, I already have a fence that's probably seven, wow, six, seven feet, a wood fence. Well, I don't know if you can go back to the picture, you probably can't see it, it's, I mean, I don't know how, how good a fence will do, I already have a fence there. Half my driveway is, has a fence, the front half doesn't. So the fence that's going to get put up, I already have it in place, except for behind my garage, which I do have a parking pad back there, there's no, there's no fence.
So the fence won't help keep children out of the alleyway there?
Well, I, I, you know, I, I don't know if it would or not.
Okay, any other questions for Tim?
I'm Joyce's father, didn't know if she'd be able to talk tonight with laryngitis. I took some pictures at 4:00 this afternoon, hearing about this just this weekend. I questioned, you know, just a week notice, with mobile people and also renters and so on, and, and we're concerned about the safety issue, so I'd like to show these pictures if Steve will do that.
Sir, could you give us your name, please?
Leroy Nevin.
Okay, and your address?
And we lived just south of this property.
Okay.
Our daughter's two miles from our house. So here's the existing property close-up. The drive-up that they will enter from your lower part of your screen and go north and the window, our daughter has this, the chain link fence and, and the neighbor to the north, Tim, just talked to you and we talked to him at 4:30 when we heard about it. And notice, I have some others, obstructions in this drive. Leroy, when I look at this picture, there's a yellow pole, or it looks yellow, maybe it's the sun reflection, isn't it? No, that's a guard rail. That's the what? That's a guard rail holding up the city electric power pole and... Thank you, Leroy. And that comes out, so if we took a measurement from the building to that guard rail, there's only 12 feet. And where is the fence going to go? And these are questions. Here's the garbage container.
Excuse me just a moment, sir, excuse me just a moment. Steve, have you looked at that guard rail?
I have measured it.
Okay.
I measured it, it's 12.4, but you don't have 12 feet four because along the building, here is the dumpsters, that's four feet. So you've cut the 12 feet down to eight feet if the dumpsters are going to be there. We're concerned about the safety of the neighborhood. There's the power lines looking up. And there's the power poles and, and the fence, will that be on the left side of those poles? That will take some space too. Also another safety issue, this building is where they'll be making the corner, this is a gas pipeline, utility building. Gas and electric are involved here. And I was glad that Tim spoke because the residents to the north, right across from this drive-up, have children. And we ought to be concerned about children and, and the wood fence, we would recommend at least a vinyl fence and not just six feet, but higher than that. He mentioned the lighting. Here's the one spotlight. You look closely and the light on your right, that shot out, there's no light there.
That one doesn't work at all. The other side doesn't work, then put the lighting in, we got to rid of that.
And this one shows another view of the, their truck on, on the south side and, and this neighborhood, it will change that residential area. And like Tim said, it will lower the property values and we ought to think of the taxpayers in this economy. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, we're, we've had all of the testimony, do you have something?
I had testimony too.
But do you have something new to add to?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm the real estate, I'm a real estate agent at RE/MAX Professionals, my name is Pam Hofer. The property that Tim Ibach owns, I had listed...
Pam, could you, first of all, let me back up just a second, could you give us your address, please?
My office is at 606 West 33rd Street.
Thank you.
At the time that the Booze Boys brought, bought the property, previous to that, this property was tried to, they tried to rezone it to, to be a place where you could come and drink there, during my listing, obviously, and we were unable to sell the property because everybody that came there saw the rezoning signs, asked what was happening and nobody with children wanted the property. We, we had it marketed for probably six months and then we turned it into a rental property. Now we have somebody in there with children and he says that the garbage is picked up. I worked probably at least one to two open houses a month during the listing. Every time I did, I was picking up trash. There would be boxes laying on the ground, not in the trash can because the trash can was full, but if you put this fence up, now you take our renter and right now she has a fence part of the way, it's going to go all the way out and you're going to take this, she was one of the ladies that moved here from, from the hurricanes down in Katrina, she's going to have to back out that entire driveway with a fence beside her, with very little room in it. As it is now, the fence ends and then the two properties just meet up. So she's going to have to drive that entire driveway with a fence there backing it up and, I mean, I, you're going to take the value of his property down one more time on me. I mean, just, just when the name changed to the Booze Boys affected us, it was Assam Drug, nobody thought anything of it even though it sold, even though it sold alcohol, it was Assam. You know, now it's the Booze Boys and, I mean, every time, I have tried selling this property since we've had it, not on the market, I drive people by it and as soon as they see it's next to the Booze Boys, they don't want to buy it. Now when you increase the traffic and you put a drive-up in there, I mean, if he wants to buy the property, then I guess we don't care, but you are affecting the resale value of the property and it has affected it for some time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to address this issue? Okay, call for a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we consider deferring, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item for 30 days.
For what reason, Jesse? Do you feel...
I think there's some things that have been brought to light that maybe we are
things. So I think there are a couple of things that would cause us to maybe consider a deferral.
I think when Jeff...
I'll second to get discussion started.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I think when Jeff, Dave, and Steve lecture us about buffering commercial, I think here's a classic example of what happens without it in the years past.
And I was, I was under the impression that there had been discussion and agreement on a fence between the two, and obviously, there wasn't a neighborhood meeting, and there wasn't any sort of agreement. And with residential right up against it's, I think we need to have agreement on the fence with the buffering or whatever. So I can't support this item.
What direction would you give the petitioner? Can't, I mean, should he have a neighborhood meeting? Are you s...
Well, I guess that would be a start, but with some of the things that have been talked about here, I don't know that I could support this, even with the neighborhood meeting.
I would agree. And I, you know, you talked about it being hard to get a variance on the north side, but you'd be using the south side to access the back. Can't you move the parking from the north to the south and put the window on the north? No, not in the alley, just on the south side.
But there's already parking spots there.
We're past, we're past audience testimony.
Okay, yeah, yeah. We're, okay, so we just...
I would just encourage the petitioner to look at some other options that may be available to him or may not be available. But I think that there needs to be more consensus than I can support this item tonight. So... I think the, I mean, I, I think that, Jesse, it's very admirable to recommend a deferral. I'm kind of hearing from the neighbors and even from the commission that unless this submittal does a 180 in terms of design and placement, that the neighborhood is not going to support it. And the planning commission is struggling to support it, too. So it'll be interesting in 30 days if we, if we vote to defer this.
Jesse, if I didn't vote to defer it, it would just be to put it on the table tonight and vote it up and down, I guess, is my thinking.
But just as a reminder, if we deny something, it's six months before they can come back in front of this body again. So deferral gives, correct, staff? So deferral gives a little bit of a chance for further dialogue.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded to defer. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed to deferral?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. Number 19, conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow a full-service restaurant within 100 feet of residential use is at 210 South Main Avenue.
Good evening again. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit in order to establish a full-service restaurant in the Ballard Building. You may be, you may have some remembrance of this building when it was an establishment called the House of Soccer. The area of the site is actually .079 acres. It's owned in the C3 Central Business District. And just for further clarification, one more time on what, since we changed the definitions of restaurants and on sale, last year, a full-service restaurant, our areas designed primarily for the service of alcoholic beverages, or when the areas primarily designed for the service of alcoholic beverages are separated from the dining areas. And in this case, a full-service restaurant is coming before you because it is within 100 feet of a residential use. In this case, the residential apartments are above the main floor. The applicant has provided an attached narrative to your staff report that describes the purpose and intent of the proposal and proposes the hours of operation to be from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week. And they expect to adjust those hours, though, as demand warrants and they establish their business further. The applicant is currently working with the police department to finalize their security management plan. I do know that they have been in discussions with Officer Greg Schmidt with the police department on working out the details of that, that management plan. And because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent to the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a conditional, a building permit, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit with three conditions. One being for this applicant only, the second being a security management plan to be approved by the police department, and the third, any proposed outdoor seating as related to the restaurant use would be, would require review and approval by the city planning office. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions of Dave? Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
I'm Chair Rick Wyland, 1109 South Phillips Avenue. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Rick?
Rick, it sounds like an exciting adventure.
It's brave. I would say that in this economy. But it's something my wife is working on. She would have been here tonight, but she's attending a convention in Las Vegas on the State Theater, looking at digital and video equipment.
Rick, you'll be operating the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Rick. Anyone from the audience wishing to address item number 19? If not, call for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the conditional use permit, item 19, with the, excuse me, with the three stipulations.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Number 20 is adjournment. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.